Good afternoon, folks. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, I believe we do have Council President Mosby. He's not showing up on the chat. By way of members of the committee, I've got myself, Chair Conway, Councilmember Burnett, Councilmember Cohen, Councilmember Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't see Councilmember Glover. Councilmember Glover, are you on? I don't see Councilmember Glover. Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilmember Ramos. Excellent.
Mr. Chair.
Also, other councilmembers we have on the call, the sponsor of the bill we'll be discussing today, Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey, I don't see. Councilman Schleifer, don't see. Vice President Shangri-Mington, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Torrance. Councilmember Bullock. And Chair Stokes. All right.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair. Councilman Glover said he was having an issue logging on. He's getting on right now.
Okay, thank you. He was there earlier.
Mr. Chair, I think I saw Councilmember Torrance in as an attendee. He may need to be elevated.
We'll make sure to take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was elevated. I'm here.
Excellent. Good to see you. By way of members of the Office of the President, Nikki Thompson. Matt Stegman. I see you, Matt. Thanks. And Aaron DeGraffinright. Not hearing nothing. I move forward to representing the mayor's office. Do we have Natasha Mihai? And Nina Themelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. This evening, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0018R, Investigative Hearing Workday Enterprise Resource Planning Implementation for the purpose of inviting the Director of the Department of Human Resources, the Department of Finance, the Director of the Baltimore City Office of Information and Technology, and other interested parties to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the development and implementation process of the Workday Enterprise System, what focus groups or other workgroups were created to identify potential problems during the development process, what offline performance tests were conducted to identify potential gaps in service delivery capabilities, and what corrective processes have been put in place to remedy the countless problems the city has faced during this implementation process. This bill was introduced on February 8th, 2021. It was sponsored by Councilmember Danielle McCray. And I want to start by thanking Councilwoman McCray for introducing this resolution and President Mosby for his advocacy on this issue. I also want to thank the agencies for coming in today to answer our questions. We can all agree that the situation is unacceptable. Many of the workers who have been left without paychecks or with paychecks in incorrect amounts have been working hard over the past year to make sure that city services remain functional amid COVID crisis. These include some of our first responders who've been dutifully serving, continuing to serve our city, even though their jobs put them at a greater risk of catching the virus. Technology and the online payroll systems should make everyone's life and job easier, not harder. It's safe to say that this is not what happened. That it is safe to say that this is not what happened in transition in Workday as city workers were left scrambling to get correct paychecks and to pay their bills. So what went wrong? How can we set it right now and in the future? For years, residents have complained of gaps in city services and mistakes by city departments and agencies. It is the task of this committee to provide oversight of government operations, but also to help find solutions and to make our city government run smoother and more efficiently. I hope that working together collaboratively, this committee, this council, this administration, and the agencies involved, we can make sure this does not happen again. I know my colleagues and I have a lot of questions. And so I'll move on and I want to introduce the sponsor of the bill, Chair Danielle McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This hearing is, as you stated, it's for a more transparent overview of the rollout of Workday and how it was implemented, along with addressing its flaws and timelines for the countless problems that the city has faced during this implementation process. As we know, Workday was implemented in December 2020. The vision for this tool was to efficiently and reliably manage, automate, and connect key processes within a city's complex network of agencies, services, and people. And despite these expectations, the rollout of Workday was flawed, with hundreds of city employees being negatively impacted, many of whom, as you already stated, are our essential workers who continue to be our lifeline throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. These crucial members of our workforce have been left underpaid or not paid in entirety since December's rollout. And this is correlated to the financial strain of many, some of whom have fallen behind on monthly bills that have included mortgages, car payments, and utility bills. The impact of the COVID-19 pandemic has been devastating to our city workers and their families. And the issues with Workday should not be another burden to bear. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the committee.
Thank you, Chair McCray. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. Please use your microphone to state your name. And we're going to start off with the Law Department.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Elena DePietre on behalf of the Law Department. The Law Department is available to answer any questions related to our role in it, but we don't have a lot to say at the moment.
Thank you, Elena. Next, we'll move on to the Baltimore City Administrator.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Nina Themelis from the mayor's office. The city administrator was unable to attend this evening, so I'm more than happy to take any questions back.
Thank you, Nina. We'll move on to the Department of Human Resources.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, to the distinguished members of the committee and council. I'm Quentin Herbert, and I'm the Director of Human Resources for the City of Baltimore. We do have a joint presentation, HR, Finance, and IT, that once the other agency heads have introduced themselves, if we could present that PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Actually, I think we're just going to actually move on because we've got just those three agencies left to introduce. So I've got Baltimore City Office of Information Technology. If you guys could introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, distinguished members of the board. My name is Todd Carter. I am the Director for the Baltimore City Information Technology Group and part of the executive sponsorship team for the Workday Implementation.
And we've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Chair Conway, Mr. President, honorable members of the committee. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Director Raymond. I know you guys have a presentation. So you should have access to.
I will start sharing now. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, Director Raymond.
Director Raymond, you're muted.
Yep, thank you. First slide is to give overview of Workday. Workday is an ERP solution software. It's a secure, cloud-based, and state-of-the-art application. Baltimore City's implementation is in Phase 1 and includes human resources, compensation, benefits, payroll, time tracking, and absence functionality. Phase 1 was deployed on October 6th of 2020 to all employees and retirees. And the functionality included human capital management and employee and retiree benefits. Phase 1B was deployed on December 13th of 2020 to the Payroll Cycle A group and on December 17th of 2020 to the Payroll Cycle B group. That functionality included Workday compensation, time tracking, and payroll. Next slide. Why is Workday important? The Workday implementation is historic and transformational, with some challenges, but with great rewards. Baltimore has chosen to bring its computer applications out of the vintage 80s and 90s timeframe. We're transforming our business processes to allow for conversion from manual-based processes to automated processes and to align with best business practices. We're providing transactional-level transparency to data for employees, managers, and executives. There's a solid business case that justifies the expenditures for Workday through increased efficiency and productivity. And we're bringing our employees to a higher computing skill level. The challenges we're experiencing today are similar to others. The change to employee self-service and pay-to-punch, again, is transformational. And we have partnered with our consultants and the agencies to resolve our challenges and issues and move forward. Next slide. Our goal. The overarching number-one goal is to make sure everyone is paid on time and in full. The Department of Finance, Central Payroll Bureau, and the Department of Human Resources, with the help of our consultants, are partnering with agencies, the city's unions, to resolve open issues, answer questions, and pay employees accurately and timely. Next slide. In reference to our partnerships, we have and will continue to conduct additional training for employees. Approximately 11,000 employees have been trained to date. We have partnered with agency human resource and payroll specialists to resolve issues. And we've held training sessions to large groups of employees. We have acquired additional resources from our consultants to help resolve issues, bolster training, and improve processes. We have provided union leadership with updates and a list of union members who have been paid with off-cycle checks to facilitate their union member conversations. Next slide. Next slide. Yep, thank you. Some of the indicators for progress. We've noticed that more employees are entering their time and managers are approving that time in a timely manner. The majority of off-cycle checks produced are for adjustments to pay, not for employees being unpaid. Employees are entering time using multiple methods, such as time clocks, kiosks, workstations, and mobile devices. The majority of system-wide issues have been corrected with target dates of February 12th and February 19th for the remainder. And we'll talk about this in a little more detail. There were 61 priority issues for resolution. The number resolved is 42, which is 69%. The number of open issues is 19, 31%. And the target date for resolution is by February 19th. Next slide. This is a bar chart really to visually demonstrate the improvement being made in terms of employees entering their time and the reduction in the need for off-cycle checks. So moving from left to right. To the left, we have a bar chart for the Cycle B employees. The main point of the graph is the gray bar, which is the number of off-cycle checks. Off-cycle checks are the checks issued for adjustments to make employees whole. There's three pay periods. And as you can see, the gray bar is reducing each pay period, meaning that the need to produce checks for adjustment for... to correct for hours is reducing each pay period. The same is true for the Cycle A group. Now, Cycle B has had three pay periods. Cycle A has had two pay periods. The point is that the number of off-cycle checks is reducing each pay period. Central Payroll Bureau and our consultants have been working very closely with all agency staff to try to determine the number of individuals that require off-cycle checks, the reasons why, and they've been working around the clock to issue those off-cycle checks. Next slide. This chart, again, a bar chart, is to show the number of off-cycle checks by agency. The real purpose of this is just to show some of the agencies that were impacted. So for Cycle B, you can see Convention Center, Transportation, Police Department, and the Library. For Cycle A, you can see Public Works, Health Department, Fire Department, Transportation, to name a few, just to give a sense of the agencies that required a number of off-cycle checks. Next slide. This is a different view of the number of off-cycle checks and the trend. So to the left for Cycle B, as you can see, there were three pay periods where we've issued off-cycle checks. First pay period, we issued 1,890 off-cycle checks. Second pay period, it was reduced to 269 checks. And for the most recent pay period that ended February 18th, it reduced from 269 to 257. For Cycle A, again, there have been two pay periods. The first pay period, we issued 992 off-cycle checks. And the most recent pay period, we issued 530 off-cycle checks. So for the Cycle B grouping, that's been an 86% reduction in off-cycle checks issued over the three pay periods. And for Cycle A, it's been 47% reduction over the two pay periods. Next slide. We received a lot of questions, and we'll get into the questions. The questions were really grouped in three areas. Data issues, configuration issues, and human error issues. So the next three slides are going to talk about these issues, data, configuration, and human errors. This is not an exhaustive list for the three categories, but it's the primary issues. And what we're showing is what the primary issues were and the corrective actions that we've been taking. So as it relates to data, one of the first issues that came up was the annual step progression was incorrect based on a data entry error and compensation. This impacted 192 police officers and two in fire. The second item, work schedule was deleted and resulted in standard, regular hours not being paid for approximately 146 DPW employees. The next item was incorrect accrued leave balances converted into Workday from ADP, which will require historical edits to correct. Additionally, errors in assignment between health benefit programs and the program coverage options. The next item, incorrect Medicare beneficiary indicator numbers in retirees without Medicare Part A and/or Part B and incorrect information on plan options. Finally, incorrect dependent data migrated from ADP to Workday. That included such things as bad Social Security numbers, missing Social Security numbers, missing gender identification, missing dates of birth, and other personal identifying information. Now, in terms of the corrective action, the DHR benefits team has been and is continuing to correct all discrepancies manually as identified on a day-to-day basis. Secondly, Central Payroll has been working on updating the leave balance accruals. And finally, the HR tech team has been working with the consultants to correct the step progression configuration, resolving the pay issues that impacted fire and police. Next slide. This relates to configuration issues. Sick leave and legacy vacation were not calculating correctly for police. This impacted approximately 225 employees in police. Secondly, permission leave was miscalculating with incorrect proration. This impacted 217 in police, 127 employees in the library system, and another 206 employees across multiple agencies, such as GGS Finance and Department of Transportation. Next, longevity progression sequencing errors impacted individuals who had reached five-year, 10-year, or 15-year anniversaries during the transition period. And finally, mismatched salary and hourly to exempt and non-exempt classifications resulted in overpayments to certain workers. So this was not an underpayment issue. It was an overpayment issue. And this was primarily library, general services, and transportation. Now, the corrective action taken for these configuration issues is that any pay identified as incorrect was and will be promptly corrected through off-cycle check issuance. And Central Payroll updated the calculations related to sick leave and legacy vacation and permission leave. And the impacted employees received off-cycle checks for compensation. Next slide, please. This is the human error category. Employee timesheets were not approved prior to payroll cutoff. We had to perform mass approvals with no agency validation for more than 30% of the timesheets in the first pay periods. Secondly, special pays such as out-of-title pay, comp time, shift differential, were not approved prior to payroll cutoff. And they required managerial approval or supervisory approval. These are some of the reasons why employee paychecks were not accurate, because the hours were not put in and various special pays were not approved prior to the payroll closing. The third item, employees who changed their direct deposit account information during the transition period of October to December were not updated in the new system. This impacted about 30 employees. Delays in hiring and onboarding new employees into the system resulted in delays to first paychecks. This was primarily limited to the Health Department and BPD, the Police Department. Finally, there were delays in entering employee life events resulting in delays to benefit eligibility. The corrective actions taken were that Central Payroll worked with agency payroll staff to identify all time that was entered and approved after the payroll closing so that off-cycle checks could be generated for payments to the impacted employees. Next, Central Payroll continued to work with agency HR as the direct deposit rejects were received and we issued off-cycle checks to the affected employees. And finally, employee benefits is correcting and manually entering the dependent data as identified on a day-to-day basis. Next slide. Most of our challenges are a result of entering and approving time after the pay period closes. The data that we have available in Workday shows that everyone that we are aware of has been paid. And most of the work and off-cycle checks that are being produced are a result in adjustments or corrections, not that individuals are not receiving their base regular pay. Or maybe, let me clarify, not receiving payment at all. The adjustments are because individuals are not receiving overtime, out-of-title pay, or other special pay because the time was not entered prior to the pay period closing. Now, key responsibilities and roles. Time entry is the responsibility of the employee. Time approval is the responsibility of the manager. Auditing time entry and time approvals is the responsibility of agency timekeepers or payroll staff. Agency HR staff has the responsibility to ensure that employee hourly and salary rates are correct, that new hires are onboarded in a timely manner, and they are responsible for updating employee records in a timely manner. We believe that if time entry is approved and the employee's HR record is accurate, Central Payroll will be able to pay the employees timely and accurately. Next slide. This slide is to show the type of support that is available to employees. We have a Workday website set up that has a lot of information for employees. We have a mailbox also established. We have a mailbox also established uh, for question and answers. There are a lot of job aids which. Explain to employees and managers how to do certain things, for example, how to read your pay slip. That was important because. The pay slip from Workday looks different than the pay slip from ADP. Other job aids would include things of how to create your work schedule. How, how to complete your time sheet, things of that nature. How to update your personal information, whether it be change of a bank account. Uh, the fact that you're met, you just got married, or you got divorced, or. You're adding a dependent due to a birth of a child, things of that nature. There's information. Specifically for the Agency HR practitioners related to compensation. Where employees can go to the Agency HR practif- um, excuse me. Agency HR practitioners for rate-related information. Specific information that they can get from timekeepers or the payroll partners. Related to time recorded and approved. And weekly, Central Payroll and the consultants. Have meetings like town halls with all of the agencies for citywide communication. Where information's presented, questions can be asked. So that everybody has a better understanding of some of the finer nuances with Workday. Next slide. This slide. Is an example of the additional HR support provided to agencies. The matrix to the right shows by pay group. What days we have meetings with each pay group. As you can see, Wednesdays, Thursdays, some of the meetings are daily depending on which work group it is. And the primary purpose for this. Is to work with the agencies on creating pre-pre payroll audits. And post-payroll audits to confirm and verify. That employees have entered their time. That managers and supervisors have approved of that time. Again, so that everyone gets paid on time and gets paid accurately. Next slide. Our guidance moving forward. The employee's role in Workday is to enter their time. The manager's role in Workday is to approve the time. HR's role in Workday. Is to ensure that the rates and salaries are correct. That onboarding occurs in a timely manner. And that employee records are updated in a timely manner. The agency's role in Workday is to ensure that. Employees and managers have entered their time and approved the time. Prior to Agency payroll cutoff. Now, special pay is noted because special pay such as. Out-of-title overtime. Is not paid automatically. It has to be entered by the employee and it has to be approved by the supervisor. And finally, agency distribution of off-cycle checks. Is just a reminder that when agencies pick up the off-cycle checks. They should be distributed to the employees in a timely manner. Next slide. In terms of next steps. Central Payroll will continue to provide guidance and collaboration with agencies. And the appropriate agency personnel. We continue to improve our communications via email, phone, and other methods to improve response times. We have set up a hotline for the union president escalations as it relates to their members. And we have provided agency-specific training, whether it be BPD, Public Works Convention Center, et cetera. For unique agency scenarios and business rules that are unique to their particular agency. Uh, we're strengthening the onboarding process. With Central Department of Human Resources and Agency HR staff. And we've implemented compliance reporting for time entry and managerial approval. This is for agency leadership so that they can. Verify that their employees are entering time prior to payroll cutoff. That the supervisors are approving that time prior to payroll cutoff. And if not, so that agency leadership can intervene and correct that. So I believe that that concludes our prepared remarks.
Thank you, Director Raymond. Um, is there anything else that IT or HR would like to add to that or any other comment?
I have no additional comments from IT.
None from DHR at this time. We worked collaboratively on that presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we're going to jump into questions from the committee. Uh, and for the committee, uh, because I want to get to the bottom of this, I think this is a really important issue. Want to make sure that uh, where as thoughtful as possible. Uh, I'm going to allow folks to do two questions in the first round and two questions in the second round if you want to make sure you get all your questions out. So to that, that's my first question. Director Raymond, you, you said that we've got sixty-eight percent of the issues resolved. How long until we can expect that all the issues are resolved, that folks can receive their paychecks?
Of the sixty-one priority issues that we've listed and presented this evening. Uh, nineteen remain open. And at this point, we believe the target for resolution is February the nineteenth.
And then um, sort of tying to that question, um, I notice you guys are relying very he- heavily on off-cycle checks. As a monitor of success of the program thus far. Is, is that the only bit to know if we've made a mistake or missed someone payment or overpaid? Or is there some other way to identify a problem? Do we have a system? In place to make sure that people are getting the right checks on time, so on and so forth?
Uh, I'll take a stab at that. We're using off-cycle checks as an indicator. Because an off-cycle check is issued to make an adjustment. To a regular payroll check. The primary reason for an off-cycle check is that the regular check. Was not correct, that it was low. And again, that could be that the total number of regular hours were not recorded. So for example, uh, you should have received eighty hours, but you only received sixty for whatever reason. We would issue an off-cycle check to make up that difference. Another ex- explanatory reason could be you received. Your eighty-hour regular check for the correct amount. But that check did not have certain special pay. Maybe you were working in an out-of-title capacity. Maybe you were working overtime or um. You should have received hazardous duty pay and you didn't get one of those special pays. An off-cycle check would be issued to adjust for that. So we believe that since we've gone live with the five pay periods. Seeing the need to issue off-cycle checks decrease each pay period. Means that there's fewer errors related to individuals receiving what they should. Now, are we at a hundred percent? No, but we can tell from the need to issue off-cycle checks decreasing each pay. We know that we're on the right track, meaning that. The things that we have put in place, improved communications with the agencies, additional agency training, that it's working. Agents, excuse me, employees. Are getting more comfortable with entering their time in a timely manner. The supervisors are approving that time in a timely manner. So by seeing the off-cycles go down, we believe that this is a very strong indicator. That we're move, as a city, we're moving in the right direction.
Director Henry, I want to, I want to clarify my question, maybe I didn't ask it right. Um, I understand off-cycle checks can be a good bellwether for folks who maybe have complained. But if someone hasn't complained, is there a way for us to identify whether or not they received the proper check and on time?
I would say we have the ability within Workday to run reports. For example, to determine has somebody received no pay? And those numbers are very low, six, ten people a pay period. That would not be unusual in an environment like this because individuals can be on leave without pay. They could be serving some type of disciplinary action. So we are looking at those types of uh, metrics to determine which ones would be. Most beneficial going forward, but to be frank. With the challenges we've had. The, right now, the primary indicator has been off-cycle checks because. We're doing everything that we possibly can to make every employee whole. As quickly as we can. So the focus has been off-cycle checks.
Thank you, Director Raymond. Um, I'm going to yield to the sponsor of this bill. I ask you, um, Chair McCray, if you have any questions you'd like to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have two questions. At yesterday's Means Committee, meeting director Bob Kennedy. Spoke about one point eight million dollars that was allocated for temporary Workday support. Can you go into detail or specifically on what we are paying for? And again, this is regarding one point eight million dollars that's been allocated for temporary Workday support.
I'll uh, I'll, I'll have to take a stab at that, uh, Councilwoman. Specifically to the one point eight million, I don't know. I'd have to ask Bob Sennemy exactly what line item is he referring to on the budget? Um, and get back to you, the specific. Henry, you may understand, but given the full budget of, of, of the workday implementation. The one point eight, actually, that seems a little low uh, to me, given what we've been, we've been doing so far. Henry, you may have something else to add. You're on mute, Henry. You're still on mute.
Director Raymond, you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Councilman McCray, to try to address your question, the one point eight million probably relates to. Uh, small change orders to bring on additional vendors. And additional staffing to assist in some of the areas where we've had issues, whether it be project management. Data, data analysts, et cetera, but we'll provide a detailed explanation for you.
I look forward to the detailed explanation. Um, the other item that I had. And I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback, so I don't know if someone else needs to put themselves on mute. The other item that I had is within the presentation, you stated that most of our challenges are a result of entering in a proven time after a pay period. And from that statement, I think it's fair to assume that majority of the challenges are due to inadequate training. So this question is, can someone speak in detail about the changes? That are being made to make sure that our managers are trained well, that our city employees are trained well? Because even through my own experience, my training has been inadequate. And I know that other city workers, their training has been inadequate, and this is not just a, a human error thing. So can you just talk to me about the new steps that you guys are taking towards training our employees for the system?
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I'll take a stab at that question. I think that it's also critically important. By way of review to talk about what steps we have been, we have taken thus far around, around training. And we've had a hundred and forty-two proctored webinars around six specific. Topics, uh, including getting started with Workday, entering time and attendance. Uh, for salaried employees, for hourly employees, there were modules for timekeepers and managers. There were separate modules for those back office professionals. Um, of those a hundred and forty-two monitored classes. Uh, over eleven thousand employees sat for at least one of those classes. In addition to those trainings, we had a hundred and forty-three identified agency readiness coordinators or ARCs. Across over fifteen of the city agencies. Those ARCs received additional training in the Office of Learning and Development. And the idea was that they would, it was a train-the-trainer format. They were trained in entering time and answering frequently asked questions. They also participated in the creation of the job aids that were dispatched as well. There are over a hundred and seventy-one job aids that covered everything from enrolling for benefits to entering time. Uh, what we have seen, and to your point, we have seen that there still remains a gap. And so we are looking back over how we can better improve upon the training that we provide to our employees. One of the things that we have done in Central DHR is we have made time and attendance entering. An introduction to Workday and the managerial level of approving time. Uh, those modules are now a part of our new employee orientation. So that every employee who comes into city employ will have those trainings at the beginning of their employment. We also have identified those agencies where we've seen more problems. Um, higher instances of a, a need for off-cycle checks, for example, BPD and DPW. And we have rallied around them. In fact, we had six trainings for payroll and timekeepers in DPW. On this past Thursday and Friday. To, to help them and assist them in understanding how to input that time and to assist our employees. We understand that there is a digital divide amongst our employees and we understand that everybody is not at the same place, right? And so we have got to think outside of the box about how to reach all of our employees. We are currently working with the Agency HR practitioners to figure out what's the best way. To reach employees where they are, if it, if it's having a trainings at the respective yard and at the plant. Uh, we're working with our partners to do that and find out from them, what's the best way? Uh, because they know their employees and they know what will work best and we're bringing them in, we're leaning in. We have weekly meetings and calls with the Agency HR practitioners. Where we have over eighty people on a call every Monday. Where we're working through these issues and trying to figure out how we can best get people informed. The best information and how we can, how we can provide that ongoing training. And to your point, uh, Madam Councilwoman, it's, it's not going to be a quick fix. There's going to have to be ongoing training, refresher training as the system gets updated. Uh, we're going to have to be committed to making sure that we have a steady line of communication to our employees moving forward.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Those are my questions for now. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman McCray, and I want to acknowledge Labor Commissioner Devermore Carter is on the call now. I'd like to open a floor to questions from folks on the committee. Councilman Burnett and Councilwoman Ramos, I've got you after.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I do want to apologize after I asked the question. I do have to jump off for another meeting, so I'll jump right in. Definitely looking forward to the data that Councilmember McCray requested. So if that could go out to the full committee, that'd be great, because that was actually the first question I had. So there was a, there was mentioned that there were physical checks issued when errors were identified. Just basically a two-part question on the same topic, Mr. Chair. One, how many people in total received those checks? How many were repeats would be helpful, I guess, until they got two times, they were error multiple times. And I guess, sorry, the second question, so related, would be, is the waiting period for those? So how long do people have to wait to get one of those checks? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Councilman Burnett, in reference to the first part of your question, how many checks? Approximately 5,000, excuse me, 5,330 off-cycle checks have been issued. How many are repeats? I'm not sure, but there were repeats, meaning the same individual getting more than one off-cycle check. Yes, that did occur. How long to take a check? That would depend on when the issue was brought to our attention from the agency. I would say two to four business days within that pay period. So if someone didn't get the correct amount on their payday, within two to four days, they were receiving an off-cycle check. Now, in some cases, it took longer to research, investigate, and resolve their issue. But on average, that's what I would say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I apologize to have to jump early. I did have one more question, but I'll email you. Probably something you don't have on. Thank you.
If you'd like to ask that question now, you should do that.
So really, the larger question was that there were multiple inputs for entering time. And I guess, would want to know what the plan is, or if it's even possible to have a unified input system for everyone, for their time period, so that you're not, because it sounds like there may be some agencies that have a clock in, clock out, some people sound like they're using computers. Is there a way or plans to just have a single system in place so that there isn't multiple inputs that are at play?
I'll take a stab at that, Councilman Burnett. You know, we do have multiple means to enter time, one being your computer or laptop, whether that's a home computer or a company computer. We also have kiosks that have been placed throughout various service territory facilities, and we also have time clocks for the fingerprint punching into Workday. And then you have your mobile phone, which allows person to use their company-provided phone to enter in their time, and certainly if they wanted to use their personal phone, they could use that as well. And we did that strategy for multiple ways to help some of the locations that may not have many computers, that may not have the computing acumen to have a bank of computers and work them, the time clocks are used for that. So we haven't really thought of a new, just one single method. We put a variety of methods out to get the variety of employees who, you know, give them multiple ways to enter their time, keeping in mind the digital divide, keeping in mind employee shifts, and keeping in mind the various remote locations that we have. Those methods allowed us to kind of reach the most people in the most cost-effective manner.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, councilmembers, Mr. Raymond, Mr. Carter, and other staff. Thanks for being here today. I received a lot of emails from workers, and I've been dealing with two water main breaks in my district, so of course I've been talking with some of the employees, of course, not while they're working, but you know, just being able to have a conversation with them. It's been extremely frustrating. And so I guess my question is, why would we go into a new system without knowing that it actually worked? And maybe it's just that there were some, you know, the, maybe, I don't, I'm not familiar with Workday, but I understand it's mostly geared towards nine to five, and so since we have workers that are, you know, eight different shifts and having to enter, and some of the stories I've heard where people would be waiting to clock in, and so they were considered late when they finally got there. So there were just multiple problems, and it seems like it didn't get tested beforehand. So why did that happen? And doesn't it make sense to try to, you know, I know that you're trying to fix things as you see them while you're giving people their proper pay? But I wonder, you know, like, how did this actually happen? And, you know, why did we have all these errors to begin with when it didn't seem like it was all tested out ahead of time?
I'll start talking about testing, what we did for testing, Councilwoman, and then we'll deal with the other components of the question. We went through a number of testing cycles for Workday, and I'll go through the particulars of them with you. The testing consisted of what we call unit testing, end-to-end testing, user acceptance testing, performance testing, and payroll parallel testing. And I'll talk about each one of those if I may. One, on the unit testing level, it's really about testing the component pieces of the software. You test that against your configuration that you define, or pretty much your requirements. That test lasted from February 7th through March 3rd, and there were over 2,300 testing scenarios and scripts, rather, that were completed. And those were completed by roughly 88 people from 16 different agencies. So that's one string of testing that occurred. The second test, the second stage of testing was what we call end-to-end testing, where you test a full business process, the transaction flow, the data flow, and those dates for that were June 5th through July 10th of 2020, with supplemental testing occurring during October enrollment, the 13th and the 30th. And for those testing scenarios, we had 1,393, and those, we had 101 people participate from 18 different agencies. And the other testing sort of stream was user acceptance testing. This is when the end-users validate the full business processes. That occurred from August 31st through September 11th. We had 78 people, excuse me, 78 test scripts that were user substance testing, and that occurred with the agency's subject matter experts and our functional leads. So then you get to your performance testing. That's when you are putting as many transactions in as you can, and those transactions really test that, can you handle the volume? That lasted from October 1st to the 6th. And then lastly, we did what we call payroll parallel testing, which compared the different transactions between ADP payroll processing and Workday payroll processing, recognizing that there are a lot of differences because of the different rates, calculations, tax tables, et cetera. And we did four cycles of payroll parallel testing. So we did a lot of testing to make sure this software is functioning and working across a lot of the functionality that was provided, and it included not only people from the project team, but people from different agencies working with the project team. So that's sort of the testing part of your question. Can you give me the other components and we can make sure, Director Raymond?
Sure, I was trying to skirt the rules and ask a billion questions at the same time, so I actually get two questions. Sorry about that. My second question is, is, you know, some very specifics. One piece of input that I got was that sometimes workers were waiting to clock in, and so when they were waiting, because there weren't enough of the clock-in thingies, technical word thingies, then they were considered late. And then that had to be adjusted, but it wasn't adjusted properly so that then, when they clocked out, the system wouldn't let them clock out because it said that, you know, there wasn't enough time or something like that. But that little teeny thing actually made a big difference in a lot of what was being calculated in their pay. So is there a plan to get more of those clock-in things? Is there an adjustment grace period? You know, that's my other question. I have a bunch more, but I'll yield after that. But that was the main question about that particular piece.
Quinton, you want to start with that one?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. I think that the question about supply is one that agencies are encouraged, if they need additional time clocks, they can request those of IT. But to go back to something that Director Carter mentioned earlier, we attempted to have that cross-functionality with the kiosks, time clocks, and mobile accessibility and computers to allow for and to prevent or solve for that problem. It would be interesting, and we can talk offline, Madam Councilwoman, to get the agency that you're specifically talking about, and we would be happy to reach out to them to make sure that they have the hardware that they need to ensure that employees can clock in timely. And also, the agency payroll timekeepers have the ability to adjust for the grace period. And so I'm not understanding, we can talk again about, you know, what can be done from that level with the agency timekeepers to ensure that the employees are compensated for that time that they're actually in line waiting to clock in.
Sure, it was DPW and DGS, you know? And, you know, the managers have lots to do, so they can't always be adjusting. So the whole point was to try to make it automated, but I appreciate your answers. Thanks very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any other questions from? I got Councilwoman Porter, Chair Costello, and then Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go into the types of testing real quick. So I'm familiar with the end-user testing, the user validation testing, and the performance testing as it relates to payroll systems. Can you walk me through the process of the different checkpoints that were used in each of those respective testing periods? And what is the percentage of, what is the percentage of inaccuracy that was supposed to come out? Like, that was supposed to happen during those testing phases? And how did that translate into the 5,300 checks that were mistaken once the system actually got into blood?
Sure, I would have to get you the actual numbers of the number, I think what you're asking for, you know, the number of defects as a result of the testing, and then the number of defects that were closed as a result of the testing. I think that's what you're asking for, and how does that translate? Or what test scenarios would we have that would relate to the number of checks you said that, you know, were messed up? I don't have those numbers right now. I can talk to you about, you know, in general, how the testing went. Typically, the testing is done by an IT person for the unit testing, working with SMEs and functional leads. The end-to-end testing is the agency SMEs as well as functional leads for the project team. They go through a rigorous testing, especially for those transactions that are financially related or pay-related, to make sure that there are multiple eyes on those tests and those test results. And everything is documented into our system called JIRA. So we have a record of all the test scripts, all the test scripts that have been completed, when they were run, who completed the test scripts, what the issues are relative to a particular test scenario, and what the resolution is for a particular test scenario. We would have to provide some additional reporting to get that information to you, Councilwoman.
Sure, thank you so much, Mr. Carter. I look forward to that. I look forward to that data. One of the reasons why I asked that particular question is, one, if quality, you know, quality control within those testing periods, if they were managed appropriately and effectively, then I'm not making the connection to the large widespread, large widespread of inaccuracies as it relates to salary, rate cards, time, you know, time and materials as relates to particular job classifications. I'm not clearly connecting that. And so like, when we talk offline, again, if you can walk me through that process specifically, what that looks like and how it came to be, that would be great.
Well, I can give you one maybe example of something that may give you a hint as to what has happened. Historically, you know, Workday is a very transparent system. It gives us a level of transparency that we haven't had before. We didn't have that with Workday. And there are certain fields within Workday that matter and that mean something. For instance, the supervisory org or the organizational structure or your location. And those are two examples where if your supervisory organization is incorrect, that is, if I'm reporting to you and you're reporting to the council chair, if that relationship is different, then the approval process of transactions are skewed because they're going to go to whomever I report to. So those fields are important, and historically, those fields are not really kept up to date in AP. And that was a huge undertaking just for all the different agencies to try to get those fields up to date. Another one is locations. For instance, locations matter. We use the mobile app for time entry for police. And that mobile app has what we call geo-fencing technology that allows a police man or woman to enter their time only while they are within a certain set of coordinates. So location is important at that point in time. So I think there's, you know, there's just a number of data fields that were converted correctly, but their source system had them as incorrect because we've never had to rely on those fields from a day-to-day business perspective. And those are just two examples of that.
Sure, and so, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to just say one more thing, and then I'll go to my next question, if you don't mind, sir. I think that that speaks to a larger data migration issue that hasn't been, that one hasn't been historically talked about, and I'm a little bit worried and concerned about the quality control, the quality control processes, because one would assume that the data migration that's happening from one process to another would include those types of identifiers within that process as well. Am I correct in thinking that, sir?
Well, we have been working with all the agencies to correct their data for over a year, as well as employees, to look at their data and correct their data. So there's the physical conversion, but there's also just work that individuals, agencies, and others had to do to clean their data up.
Sure. Okay, thank you so much, sir. And then my next question has to do with the off-cycle checks being delivered. One of the issues that I've been hearing in my district had to do with the lag of the mail. So the off-cycle checks going through the mail, and then them going to people, you know, two and three, you know, two and three. If they're two and three days reported to you all, and you all are turning around that time, you know, probably two to five days after that, then if it's going through the then it's, if it's going through the mail, then it's not going to reach the person until, until three to four to five days later with the lag of, of the mail service. So can, can you all speak to, have you all looked at kind of the, the average lag time? That workers actually receive their check, not just, not just the worker actually reporting the check back to the agency that it wasn't accurate?
Councilwoman Porter?
Yes, sir.
This is Henry Raymond. I'll address that. So the, the first clarification is, is that off-cycle checks are not mailed. Yep, off-cycle checks are printed within the central payroll office. Agencies physically come to pick the checks up, take the checks back to their agency, and have a distribution system of the employees picking the checks up. So the, the issue that you're referring to relating to the, the US Postal Service? This is related to the regular payroll run. So as it relates to the regular payroll run, individuals that do not have direct deposit will receive their payroll checks via the US Postal Service. And yes, we have noticed that there's a problem with US mail being delivered within Baltimore City. We have noticed that the delay could be probably up to 10 days. So in a lot of cases, what we've noticed is we mail the check for one pay period one. It's not received. We mail the check for pay period two. That's not received. And maybe a few days after the second check was mailed, the first check gets delivered. Now, we've are doing this kind of like on an individual basis. Employee calls and says, it's been eight days. Let's do a stop payment and reissue. We would do the stop payment and issue an off-cycle check. We have experienced is that as soon as we issue the off, excuse me, as soon as we do the stop payment, the next day or two days later, that check shows up. It's not any good. Employee is waiting on average, two to four days, business days, to get the off-cycle check prepared. So yeah, that's the, now, we don't have a solution for that right now. The only option would be is that we do not mail any regular payroll check. So if you do not direct deposit, you have to come pick the check up. The only problem that that poses for us from a production perspective is that we would then have to manually sort all of those checks that would normally go in the mail. And that takes more time away from processing off-cycle checks, doing the other investigations, make people whole. But, but that's, that's what the issue is. We have noticed that the US mail is slow.
Yeah, okay. And I'll, I'll wait. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll wait for my other questions. Thank you, Mr. Raymond and Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not sure who this question is directed at, but when we get constituent complaints from folks who are city employees that live in our district, how do you want us to handle those? Who should those be routed to?
I'll, I'll take a stab at that, Councilman Costello. We have a a specific email address. It's called e-times. I'll give you the specific address, but we have a specific email where central payroll members receive the complaints and can begin to triage those requests to determine what's, excuse me, what's required.
I guess maybe I'm not asking the, I appreciate that, Director. I'm probably not asking the question the right way. So we're having issues with water billing over the past couple of years. DPW set up an email address to send these complaints to. I don't really believe that I deserve special treatment because I'm a council member. However, it'd be nice to not push it in the queue in the same system that everyone else is using. There's kind of an expectation that if members of the public are reaching out to us, that we're able to help push it through in an expedited manner. So providing that URL to our constituents basically is the same thing as saying you should just send an email to, you know, waterbilling@baltimorecity.gov, and you get the same boilerplate response from DPW that says someone will respond to you within 15 days. That's obviously not something that any of us find to be acceptable, including yourself. So is there a way that we can expedite those, those requests to the administration to get those resolved quicker?
Yeah, I, I understand the, the question better. Send, send to me, to my email address.
Perfect. Greatly appreciated. Mr. Chair, my, my second question isn't so much a question, but a comment for Mr. Carter. I just want to thank you for the detailed explanation of the testing that was done pre and post-migration. From my perspective as someone who's audited major IT investments for, for eight years, I, I find that to be a pretty in-depth process that you went through. I would note that oftentimes when you're dealing with a systems migration of this magnitude, despite testing being, even if testing is perfect, things are going to go wrong for a variety of reasons. And we don't have enough time tonight to really delve into all of those technical reasons, but do appreciate the, the detailed response to Councilwoman Ramos's question on that. To me, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Costello. Next, I've got Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the agencies for being here. I had a constituent reach out who did not want to be identified, but who had an issue with their check and claims that they had a bill due and were counting on their check, and so had to take out a loan as a result. And now owes money on that. Are we going to compensate folks who were put out in that kind of a way? Is there any sort of remuneration for people that incurred that type of hardship due to errors within the system?
Councilman Cohen? The answer is yes. And let me try to be specific. If, if an individual had to take out a loan, they would, we would be willing to reimburse for the interest or the fees associated with the loan? The answer is yes. And the mechanism for that would be for the end of, for the employee to complete an expense voucher, have it approved by their supervisor, and attach the appropriate documentation. Now, you know, the appropriate documentation would essentially be the document that indicated this is a loan for would have 10% interest, which equates to $300. Some type of documentation to demonstrate what the request is for.
I appreciate that response. As we all know, once folks get into that kind of a hole, it's not good, and it can get worse and worse and worse. And these are essential employees and, you know, so really glad that we're going to be able to make folks whole or in that situation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And allow me to add one other thing. We shared this information this past Friday with a meeting with agency heads. So the information will start to trickle down, and we'll be sending out more communication. But essentially, that's going to be the process. Complete an expense voucher, attach the appropriate documentation as to the cost of the fee, whatever it is. You know, it, it could be my vehicle was repossessed and I had to pay an extra 250 to get the vehicle back. Okay, put the, the invoice for the 250, attach it to an expense voucher, supervisor sign off, and submit it for reimbursement.
Noted. Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank, thank you, Councilman Cohen. Next, I've got Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Councilwoman McCray, and my fellow colleagues who are taking the stats on this issue. Thank you to the panelists for coming and joining us and explaining to us. But most importantly, I'd like to apologize, which I had heard from, like, no one on the side of workforce. I'd like to apologize to the men and women across city agencies that have bust their butts to do the job that we hired them to do and provided and compensated. And also thanks to those coworkers that helped their fellow coworkers with bills that needed to be paid until their paycheck had gotten in their hands. My question is, what redundancies did you have in place to compensate for human error? How did they fail? And what are the redundancies being put in place to make sure that we have none of those problems in the future? Can anyone hear me?
We hear you, I think.
Yeah, anybody, anybody hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Certainly.
Let me repeat the question, all right? The question is, what redundancies did you have in place to compensate for human error? How did they fail? And what are the redundancies being put in place to make sure that we do not have this problem moving forward?
Got it. I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a stab at this, Councilman, and certainly speak on behalf of, of Director Raymond and Herbert to say, you know, one, we, we certainly are remorseful in the pain and suffering that this has caused. And as we stated earlier, at the beginning, the very beginning of our presentation, and that our number one goal is to make sure that employees are paid on time and accurately. And to meet that, we have acquired a number of resources and deployed them 24/7 to work on protecting our coworkers throughout all, all through the city. We sit and meet and work with them on a day-to-day basis. There are meetings in the morning, in the afternoon, on weekends, and, and, and the teams behind central payroll, central HR, IT, and our consultants are all over this and working, again, day and night to do this. So if we didn't expressly communicate the poverty and severity of that, but we certainly have remorse and will continue that remorse, but continue that dedication to make this situation better for our team members every day until it is better.
I'll take a stab. I'm hearing a lot of feedback. I don't know if someone is muted or not, but if you guys can hear me clearly, I'll keep on. I'll take a stab at your question. Let me repeat it just to make sure that I, I, I'm stating it correctly. You're asking what, what redundancies that we put in place to take care of human error for this phase? And what redundancies will we take into place to take care of human error in future phases? Did I state that question correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, one of the things that we've done for, for, from a redundancy standpoint, is, as, as Quentin mentioned, a lot of training, a lot of job aids, and a lot of communication. Keep in mind that we, our initial plans of how we were going to train were hampered because of the COVID situation, where we couldn't bring people together as we normally would like to have for those people who need more hands-on training because we didn't want to, you know, introduce some sort of super-spreader event because we did that. And so we had to rely on more automated ways, more paper-based ways, and more kind of trickle-down methods for making sure people were, were trained. So, you know, the redundancies have been just more and more training. Quentin mentioned that training that we are doing every day. More and more, what we call change management, just getting people educated to understand the differences between what they did in the prior system and what they need to do to the new system, and what changes that they will need to make as a result of that. So we've done a lot of that and continue to do that, and have recognized moving forward that that is something that we have to put extra special emphasis on, especially because of some of the digital divide issues that we have across our, our, our city. But I'll ask Quentin or Henry to maybe add to what I just said, if, if anything.
Sure. First, I'd like to just say that Mayor Scott and the administration has made clear that if one employee is not paid correctly, that's one too many. And so that's, that's our standard, and that's our bar. What we've also done is to create an agency checklist, which is to be run before the payroll is due. We have the ability to audit the reports that are in that agency checklist and determine which agency practitioners are pulling those reports, which professionals are, are completing that checklist before the close of payroll. And so that's another failsafe that we have to ensure that those who are responsible for making sure that employees' time is entered timely and accurately are indeed doing that. And so those coupled with the, again, the continued training and the continued communication, those are the two major components of organizational change management, because this is not just a change in tech. It's also a change in culture and change in behavior. And in any organization of the size of city government, that is going to be a heavy lift. And so we have to continue with the training and ongoing communication even after full implementation. It's going to be a continued organizational change management program.
Okay, Mr. Chair, can I go with my, my next question, please? Thank you.
Please do.
So when switching from ADP, can you tell me who was responsible for keying in the data into the system to include the employee's information? And what was that process from switching from the data at ADP to Workday? And who's responsible for, like I said, keying in all those employees' information? Was it ADP? Was it Workday? Who was it?
I, I can take a stab at that. I can take a stab at that, Todd. At onboarding, it, it has always been the agency HR practitioner's responsibility to ensure that employee data is accurately entered into the system of record. As Mr. Carter indicated previously, there were certain fields that historically the city simply did not use. For example, organizational supervisory organization. So it was not important in ADP if your supervisor was not correct. It was not important in ADP if your job location was not correct, because those, those data fields weren't necessarily utilized in ADP. Beginning in the summer of 2019, we began instructing agencies to begin to clean their data, their demographic data, because of the reliance on supervisory organization within Workday, that those data sets were going to be critical. And we began communicating with agencies. We assisted agencies. The HR tech team worked with agencies to assist them in updating that information. And then there was a data migration period that took place as we migrated the data. And then there was a data migration period that took place as we migrated the data from ADP to Workday. And so there was that component. There's an old adage, garbage in, garbage out. And so if the data wasn't cleaned up in ADP, we were cleaning up data as it was migrating into Workday. And so we understand that. And we've been encouraging agency HR practitioners to ensure that as they onboard employees, that they are onboarding them timely, that all of that information is correct in the system because that could lead to a delay in compensation. And so we've been.
So would it be responsible to say that ADP was the problem? It was everyone's responsible for this?
I don't know if I would say that it was ADP. I think that with any legacy system, I think that the legacy system didn't have the level of transparency that an enterprise of this size one would need or want. But secondly, it didn't have the level of transparency and use of the data as we're using it now in Workday. And I would defer to Mr. Carter to talk more around the technical components around the data migration and the challenges that we saw in that area.
One other question before you get off, and you know, just adding on to it. So who's responsible for where we have, you know, some coworkers, some workers are getting more money than usual? Like who cuts that? How do you get that money back?
Councilman Glover, can we come back around? Make sure folks can get their questions in.
Yes, sir. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I believe that's all the questions that we've gotten from the committee. And I believe, I don't see any other council members on. Oh, I see Councilman Torrance. Councilman Torrance, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two requests. One is, can I see the data about training for our employees across agencies? Those who are trained, those, how many who missed training? The additional question is, what is the data cleansing that's going to happen post-migration? And what does that look like by agency as well? Because one of my constituents did reach out to me. She's had 17 individual, I think, I forgot what you call them, checks? The off-cycle checks in a year. So I just want to understand how are we dealing with data, but also timekeeping? Most of the questions that my colleagues have asked you, I had already. So I just want to make sure those requests are out there.
We do have a slide that shows the summary of some of the training, if you'd like me to share that. I can do that now or we can follow up via offline. You call Mr. Chair. However, I'm sorry, I didn't know exactly who was talking, but we can meet that need however you'd like us to.
I would like to follow up offline because I want like explicit data points, not just a slide. Namely, just to see what the data fields are by agency as well as the timelines for those data cleanses. For me, it helps me understand where our data governance is across the agencies. Because if it's human error, then we should have some high flyers that I would like to know, how are you going to manage those high-flying agencies and what specific departments we're seeing these issues in?
Sure.
Any other questions, Councilman Torrance?
I'll go back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a question. Can you explain a little bit the decision-making process behind selecting Workday as the HR software and Accenture as the consultancy firm for implementation? And what do these firms have by way of responsibility in remedying these problems?
Yeah. I'll address the first part of the question is, how did we select Workday? We did a request for information, sent it out to a number of organizations such as Oracle, Workday, and some other large ERPs. We then did research and we settled on Workday due to price and the fact that the state of Maryland had selected Workday and the city of Denver. We had extensive discussions with the city of Denver's experience in terms of, was this product, did it have the scalability that the Baltimore needed? What was Denver's experience? I think also it was a county in Florida. So based on our, with the request for information data, pricing proposals, specific inquiries with Denver, we selected Workday. Now, Workday is the application. And the model that Workday uses is you have an integrator that leads the client through the process of installation. So the integrator for Workday originally was a vendor called Sierra Cedar. Sierra Cedar ultimately was bought out by Accenture. So Accenture is the integrator. But I want to be clear that the primary staff of Sierra Cedar, all of the consultants, whether it be the project manager, the data analysts, et cetera, they are all the same individuals before Accenture acquired Sierra Cedar. And maybe Director Carter can fill in a little bit more of the details. But essentially, that's how we settled on Workday and the integrator, Sierra Cedar, now Accenture.
In terms of what services we get from the integrator, we get the, you know, Baltimore, the Baltimore project team was trained in Workday, but did not have, I hear a lot of feedback, so. So the Baltimore city employees were trained in Workday, but they do not have the implementation expertise to implement Workday. And so the integrator pairs up with our leadership team, project managers, change managers, and then our functional leads to help guide them through the implementation process from each of the stages. And I'll, you know, I'll talk a little bit more, then I'll ask Director Herbert to talk about the different stages. And it is there that the mentorship occurs, not only to the functional leads, but the SMEs, but also just the knowledge transfer of very specific knowledge in addition to the training that our employees have had. So that the integrator is relied upon to not only provide us the methodology to go from ADP to Workday, it provides the additional resources for additional partners if we need them. So for instance, we use our partners to help us with data conversion. They helped us with that. If we need additional resources, whether functional or technical resources, they can provide those resources to us. As we are now in the production support phase, we have relied extensively on Accenture to give us additional resources to help with some of the training that we're doing, to help provide additional mentorship for the agency HR and payroll people, and to also help us with managing some of the processes that need tightening. The Accenture resources are on the phone and paired up with our payroll unit one-to-one. And as they are going through payroll, they're there as a second set of eyes to help them make sure that we are doing it right. And we've taken the same tactic and pushed that out in similar terms to the agencies. So think of the integrator as a partner that is at the ground level as well as the leadership level and executive sponsorship level, and a partner that can, we can use to leverage resources, expertise, and so on to help us through the implementation. And I'll ask Director Herbert to go through the stages that we went through with Sierra Cedar regarding beginning to now. Quinton?
Thanks, Todd. Again, this is Quinton Herbert. And I think it's important to understand that the implementer was there, as Mr. Carter indicated, from the very beginning. And what we looked at is aligning the city of Baltimore's key business processes with, you know, standard business procedures. And there were three major overarching goals that the project comes back to. Standardization and utilization processing, process improvement and innovation, and allowing agency heads and administrators to make data-driven decisions. And so the implementation partnership began with what was called the Business Process Alignment Phase. And even within the Business Process Alignment Phase, before there was any work done around system design, there were five phases of Business Process Alignment. The first phase of Business Process Alignment was where we did a Business Process Overview. There were sessions with the implementer on a foundation data model, understanding core human capital management and how that would work in the city, payroll, integration, and time tracking, absence and benefits. They conducted in Phase Two, they conducted day-in-the-life sessions with our subject matter experts and functional leads in both benefits, compensation, and from some of the larger agencies that are more nuanced, like fire and police. In Phase Three of the Business Process Alignment Phase, there was a business process overview where the implementer looked at our administrative manual policies, our collective bargaining agreements, all of the documentation that would drive work and/or pay rules, and lined them up and held them up against the out-of-the-box functionality of Workday and where Workday had out-of-the-box capabilities and where there may be need for integrations. Four of that Business Alignment Process Phase included analysis and alignment of our current business practices and understanding that our current business practices may not be the best business practices and how moving and migrating to the new system would allow us to leverage that transition into moving into better and best business practices. And then the fifth and final phase of the Business Alignment Process dealt with conducting workshops where the results of that Baltimore Business Process Alignment shared with functional leads, functional leads across those core those core functions, HCM, benefits, payroll, tracking and attendance and absence. Because understanding that those functional leads would ultimately be responsible for those functions in the system after the implementation. We had alignment. We continued that as we went into the design phase, the building phase, as we, and all the way through the implementation and go live in October where we went live with employee benefits. The implementer has been on the ground assisting in migrating, both migrating the data as well as for those issues that we have seen where there has been issues related to data or issues related to configuration, helping us to troubleshoot those configuration issues and resolve them. So there has been partnership with the implementation team and the functional leads and subject matter experts at the city level from day one. That answers your question.
It does. Thank you for explaining that. And you know, my second question, my final question has to do about preparation. I think it's pretty fair to say that our preparation for this transfer was not sufficient. And, you know, we see that it's disproportionately, or at least the numbers show that it's really hit fire, police, and DPW. What steps are we taking specifically with those agencies, but I guess across the board? I guess this sort of touches on to Councilman Torrance's question, but what steps are we taking to fix this problem? Make sure that folks are adequately prepared, especially going forward. Now we know it's a problem, so that we don't have this issue going forward.
I guess, I guess. Go ahead, Director Ray.
Yeah, thank you. I would address that by indicating a lot of what we've previously said this evening, which is significantly increased the number of training, partnering with the agencies one-on-one to guide and collaborate with them on the issues, creating pre- and post-audit checklists, agency checklist, the compliance checklist, and providing more training to the individuals. We're going to continue to do this until the numbers are where they should be, which is everyone's getting paid on time, in the correct amounts, without issues. We're committed to doing this. As part of the presentation, we presented information where we're meeting with agencies in the various pay groups daily and weekly or several times a week. And this will continue until we are fully stabilized and all employees are completely familiarized with the Workday processes.
Thank you. Any other questions from Councilman Cohen? Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you to our agency folks. So getting back to folks that need to be made whole from all this, what are we doing to specifically communicate the information that you communicated tonight in this hearing directly to them? So for any of the folks that had any sort of issue, this could occur, that there could be an issue where they then had to either take out a loan or suffer some kind of penalty because of error on our side, on the city's side. So what are we doing to explicitly communicate that information to them? Because as I said, the gentleman who reached out to me today didn't know that, which is why I asked. And also to say, you know, look, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Costello, but we're looking at $100 to $130 million hole for next year. So not good that we're paying additional money to correct an error.
Yeah, I'll respond to that, Councilman Cohen. We take full responsibility for the additional cost that this may represent. It's the right thing to do by the employees. What the plan is, is that we will be sending out communication to the union presidents, specifically what you're discussing, for these types of issues, how to make the employees whole, how they should put this information on their expense vouchers and submit it for reimbursement. That's the plan. We're going to do it by email blast and by directly reaching out to the unions so that we can get the unions to assist us with pushing the communication out. Now, the mayor publicly spoke to this in the media, I believe, early last week. I reiterated it to the agency heads this past Friday. And the final step of this is to push the communication out with the assistance of the unions.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I would say, I think that's an important step and utilizing the unions is good. I would also, though, suggest that we internally go through and cross-reference every single person that we know had an issue and individually reach out to them to let them know that if they suffered any financial hardship, that they can get compensated.
Understood. And I'd like to add that what we have done to date is we have provided lists to each union. of every individual that we had to prepare an off-cycle check for. Because theoretically, if an individual had to receive an off-cycle check, that may be an indicator that they may be in the category of having an additional hardship that they need reimbursement for. And we provided every name to each union last week. I apologize, earlier this week.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond.
Following the meetings we had with the unions.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, and thank you, Mr. Raymond. I'm going to acknowledge Councilman Glover.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Thank you to the director for that explanation. I just have one thing. So I come from DPW. I worked in city government for a very long time, DPW. Then I went over to the Office of the State of County. And they felt they have an ally with me. You know, they call me all the time. They tell me, no, why is this? And they blame on elected officials many the time, because they feel like, you guys should know, you know the inside scoops and things of that nature. But I just want to point out, you know, one individual who reached out to me, I don't want to say his name, but he still, he hasn't gotten a check in about, he said, close to a month. And he was, he was at a point where he felt like he just wanted, not to commit, like, suicide, but it was like, they forced him, like, man, you gotta come to work. You know, you gotta get here regardless. And he feel like, you know, why should I come to work and I'm not even getting compensated? So it's like, he feels like he's stuck in the middle where he want to come to work, and he want to get compensated, but then if he get on the job, he just don't want to do the work, because he's not getting the money. So what do we, like, what do we have in place to kind of help those individuals out? Do we have anything in place where they can get some type of help from, I don't know, from therapists or anything? Because they're going through what they're going through, and they feel like, you know what, their voice aren't being heard? So I just want to know, what can we do to kind of help those individuals that feel like their voice is not getting heard? Because they feel like, they feel like, they send it to the supervisor, supervisor may send it over to their superintendent, but sometimes, we know in government, like, your hands are tied, and it's like, just don't have no way further to go. It's like, it's downtown, it's not in out control. What do we do to help those individuals?
Okay, Councilman Glover, let me take a stab at that. I know you don't want to say the person's name in this public forum, but I'd like for you to, you know, email me with that individual's name, so that I immediately determine why they haven't been paid, and take the steps to get them an off-cycle check, so at least we resolve the fiscal part of it. Now, I'll have to defer to Director Herbert with HR, but an individual like this, if they've expressed suicidal thoughts, maybe they're depressed over this, et cetera, we should be making a referral to the Employee Assistance Program, where they can get the appropriate type of assistance. You know, they have the counselors to talk to about these issues. Now, maybe this is the straw that's breaking the camel's back. There could be other issues involved. So I would say it's, it's a referral, which is confidential, to the Employee Assistance Program. And again, what I would ask you to do is let me have that individual's, you know, offline, so that we can get the research done to figure out, are we already working on this individual in terms of the pay? Or do we need to escalate it and get this resolved for this person?
I'll do that, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Raymond, Mr. Herbert, Mr. Carter. I know you all have been working really hard on this, and it shows that you're, you know, very committed to making sure that this gets active. Two questions. One is, I think, Mr. Herbert, you had mentioned early on about the challenge around, some of our workers have never had to use a computer before, and Workday is very much web-based. So, in your trainings, my understanding, my understanding is that the trainings are, you know, video and on the computer and all of that. So what are going to be the steps to make sure that our workers who, you know, are doing amazing work for us every day, just not on a computer, are, and never had had to use a computer, are able to use the system and not have, and have any more problems again?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for the question. And again, as I indicated, we are currently working with the agency HR practitioners. They have the best understanding of what will work for their specific employees. And to your point, right, we have employees where web-based training is not going to get it. Having it on YouTube is not going to get it. And so, we are working, I had a discussion with the HR lead for DPW earlier today about setting up trainings at the various yards and plants, and trying to identify how we can do that, and how we can best serve that employee base that may need some additional resources around utilizing the technology that's at the, at the facility. Whether it's understanding, you know, how to use a time clock, providing those resources. And also, we've been discussing how we can have those agency timekeepers whose job it was previously to input that manual paper time sheet to be more readily available to assist those employees in making sure that their time is entered correctly and assisting them. It's, it's working with the agencies to find out what best suits their particular workforce. And we're working with those agency HR partners to accomplish that.
Thank you. And I had a question from Mr. Raymond. In one of the slides, and if you stepped away, you can answer it later, one of the slides says that there are 61 issues, hi, Mr. Raymond, there are 61 issues still remaining. What does that mean? Is it that, you know, you're working on making sure that the dropdown is better and clear? Is it that, you know, working on getting more time clocks? What does that, what does that mean?
Yes. In the slide presentation, what we indicated is that there were 61 priority issues. These included configuration issues, which could be calculation errors, things of that nature, data errors that we've discussed, and the human error issues. What we indicated was that of the 61 priority issues, 42 have been closed, 19 remain open. These are primarily data-related, where we discussed in the presentation that with some of the benefits information, we're missing social security numbers, gender identification, things of that nature. Leave balance information is incorrect, as we discussed. It was brought over from, it was wrong in ADP, and it was brought over, it's still incorrect. We're still working to clean that up. So that's like, one of the 19 open issues. So, we anticipate that in the next week or so, the target is that those items will be resolved. So, those, those are examples of some of the items we're still working on for resolution.
I'll also add, Councilwoman Ramos, that what happens in a lot of cases, we will have individuals either send an email or call, and they'll talk about a particular problem. And what we have to do is to triage that problem, do some analysis and determine, is this an isolated issue for a particular person? Or is this a systemic issue across a number of employees, or a class of employees, or a particular pay code, or whatever? So, that analysis is done, and those issues that end up being critical are the ones that impact the most, you know, the most people in the, in the, in the, in the most harmful ways relative to pay. So there's that, taking all the inputs, understanding systemically what are some of the problems, identifying, okay, this is an issue that impacts police, fire, or just police, or maybe DPW, and then putting the right resources on it to fix it.
Thank you. That was, that was what I was looking for. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Seeing no questions, we are going to move forward to public testimony. So, we're going to actually start off opening testimony to the unions, specifically union presidents, if they are on the line and would like to have a few words. For public testimony, can you? Excuse me, one second. So for public testimony, committee staff will coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient. If you're connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the host, one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you're unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or provide their testimony via the chat function. With that, I'm opening the floor to, to first, I'm going to open the floor first to Rich Langford, President of Local 734.
My name is Rich Langford, President of Local 734 Baltimore Firefighters. I represent about 1,200 active men and women of firefighters and EMS members. Some of my big concerns with this, and I'm sure many of the other union presidents are going to share the same concern, is that the unions really have not been kept informed of this. I'm finding a lot of information during this hearing that I do not know. I have had one spreadsheet sent to me concerning our members' pay issues, and that was the missing stipend that affected every member. We have sent over 100 emails with members' concerns, pay issues, and I have not got one answer to those from anyone. That's very concerning. The other, this isn't just a pay issue. This is also affecting members' health benefits. That's where this all first started getting noticed, when members did not have healthcare, retirees did not have healthcare. So this is an overall issue of everything this system is supposed to fix. Maryland implemented this system a few years ago and had nothing but issues with it. We tried to implement it in the middle of a pandemic with a half workforce, and now we're saying we need to fix problems. Well, these problems should have been addressed from the beginning. You know, I thank the council for allowing me to speak on behalf of my membership. Hopefully, we can get some answers. I don't even know if our payroll this week is going to be correct, because I haven't been told what problems have been fixed. It's very, very concerning. This, this was a letdown from the top to the bottom with the IT, HR, finance. The communication has just been absolutely horrible through this process. Our membership, our employees deserve a lot better across, across the city, top to bottom. I thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of our membership.
Thank you, Rich. I want to remind folks again, and this wasn't an issue with you, Rich, I just want to remind folks to keep your testimony to two minutes. We have a lot of people on the line, 74 folks in total. And we want to hopefully get through all those, those folks. Next, we've got Josh Fannin of IAFF Local 964.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May it please the members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. My name is Josh Fannin, and I am a Battalion Chief in the Baltimore City Fire Department. I am also a recently-elected union official, serving as President of IAFF Local 964 Baltimore Fire Officers since January 5. In that way, I am the new guy on the block, but I have a fresh perspective based on my background as a city employee and as an attorney. Similarly, Mayor Scott and some of the members here have been in office for a relatively short period. In short order, all of us were confronted with massive failures of a systemic nature that have brought all kinds of issues to the forefront. I welcome the opportunity to explain to all of you what exactly is going on. In January, a new payroll system, Workday, was implemented quite haphazardly. At the same time, major changes to healthcare were pushed through with disastrous results for both our active members and retirees. These programs were in the works for years, prior to their implementation, without any feedback from the boots-on-the-ground that run the day-to-day functions of city government, or from the union leaders most equipped to foresee complications and major policy changes. These hastily-implemented major changes shine a light on problems with management of information systems, human resources, and finance. It's a common theme running through all levels of city government: poor management, lack of planning and training, as well as poor communication between agency heads and union employees. Bad data in has resulted in bad data out. Workday has shorted workers hundreds of thousands of dollars. Health insurance benefits have been frozen or non-existent for both active and retired employees. Off-cycle checks have not been issued for the overwhelming majority of these outstanding shortages. My members have yet to be made whole, despite testimony to the contrary. This perfect storm has exposed a systemic failure of operational efficiency that the new administration must now address. The mayor and city council are not alone. Union leadership is very much here to help. This is a problem we can solve, so long as we work together toward real, lasting solutions. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Josh. I want to take a moment to acknowledge Council President Nick Mosby, who's just come on to the call. Nick Mosby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding this hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair McCray, for bringing this to our attention. We understand and know the issues currently as relates to our elected, our, the men and the women that are literally keeping the city of Baltimore moving, that have fought through this coronavirus, that have been our essential employees, have supported the city. And that's why we wanted to take this very strong approach and ensure that, particularly on this day, your voices were heard. We are thankful for the hundreds of folks that have reached out to us to let us know their specific concerns, their specific needs. We know that human resources, as well as finance, are in tune to try to ensure that they correct those issues, and we will continue to work that. This is a council that is prepared, that it's right to really drive down to solution-based oriented type of initiatives. And that is exactly what this hearing is here for today. So again, I just wanted to quickly thank you, Mr. Chair, for kind of hosting this hearing, for allowing citizens of Baltimore to understand and know the concerns and the problems, but more importantly, to the folks, the men and women, who are literally working every single day to support the city, provide you with full transparency of providing your concerns, your needs in the midst of this global pandemic. We're really, really thankful for you. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you, President Mosby. We're going to move back into testimony, and I want to bring to the floor Annette Ryan.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Council President Mosby, Chair Conway, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify on this issue. As many of you know, the change to Workday has created a host of problems for my members and other city employees in getting their pay on time and in full. It is our belief that this system was implemented by the previous administration without the necessary due diligence to ensure that it will work properly for the city and its workers. I've heard my members' stories about incurring overdraft fees and seeing insurance policies getting canceled because their paychecks were not deposited into their accounts as expected on payday. The City Union of Baltimore needs to know how its members will be made whole, and how will the city compensate them for the collateral damage that's a consequence of not being paid on time. Our union also has questions about the execution of this system. Why not have the people who have historically been tasked with doing payroll actually doing the payroll? As it stands today, our supervisors are being tasked with doing this, and I have been told that this system demands a significant As it stands today, our supervisors are being tasked with doing this, and I have been told that this system demands a significant amount of time and attention. Time and attention that's being taken away from their regular duties of supervising their subordinates. Time and attention that our supervisors, I'm sorry, time and attention that our supervisors should be using to supervise employees not working on payroll. Our city and its agencies can and will run better if employees who aren't trained or tasked with handling payroll do not have to handle payroll. I've also heard from members who are supervisors that they are working on their off-time to make sure the payroll is correctly entered to ensure that employees get paid on time. Lastly, I would like for us to stop placing blame on our employees. Too often, the public perception of city workers is that they are ineffective and incompetent. That perception is largely influenced by the way city leaders in the past have publicly talked about our city workers. These women and men have been vital to keeping essential city services running during this pandemic. And they deserve more public respect from our city leaders. Again, I am Antoinette Ryan Johnson, President of the City Union of Baltimore, and I am an employee of the Baltimore City Police Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Antoinette. Uh, we're, we're going to move on to, uh, Glenn Middleton, uh, Ask Me. Uh, Glenn, do you have any, any words you'd like to say? Hearing nothing, I'm going to move on to Elliot Cohen.
Hi, this is Elliot Cohen. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm going to speak on behalf of the police employees represented by FOP Lodge Three. Uh, two minutes is not enough time for me to list all of the issues experienced by the hundreds of our members. Including the five hundred or so members that still have not been paid correctly. In my own experience, while on paternity leave, I was unpaid for three days, received an off-cycle check a few weeks later, then had that amount deducted from my next paycheck. Again, requiring another off-cycle check. The error that caused my issue and the errors that caused my, uh, caused the other many employees' issues could have been avoided had there been a competent implementation. The FOP attempted to begin engagement on Workday in May of twenty twenty. BPD leadership had agreed to a working group, but was advised by the implementing city agencies not to engage the FOP. We could not start meeting again until the end of summer. As a go-live date loomed, the FOP and BPD recognized there were still a number of unanswered questions and data errors within Workday. That is why we and separately BPD leadership requested a delay in implementation. However, the implementing agencies again ignored employee concerns and plowed ahead, knowing there would be problems. At the time, no system was put in place to deal with any issue that arose. Employees were to fend for themselves. I believe those handling Workday on the BPD side were doing the best they could with the limited help they received from the central departments. The insinuation that most of the errors are employee error is like forcing a truck driver to fly a plane and blaming human error when that plane crashes. The way the employees have been, uh, bulldozed in the Workday implementation is the same as how the city employees are being railroaded across the board on other issues like healthcare. I'd like to thank you again for, uh, giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight on this issue affecting, still affecting hundreds of our employees.
Thank you, Elliot. Uh, next I'm going to acknowledge, uh, Adrian Jones.
Hello, I'm, I'm Adrian Jones. I'm a lead worker from System Street Convenience Center. Um, first, I would like to thank Mr. Glover for, um, listening to our concerns and trying to help the best way he can. And second, I really appreciate everyone responsible for this meeting and the information that's been provided. Um, there's many concerns that the convenience center, System Street Convenience Center, like right now, our clocks isn't working at all. Like we can't clock in, we can't clock out. And my main concern is, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of employees here that our time has been like, provided, we've been sending out, getting our time sent down, uh, daily by our chief and our supervisor, but then we get an email saying that we still need to provide, it's like we provide, they're providing the information more than once and it's still not going through. And it's like really, really frustrating, really frustrating here because we have employees that don't want to work. Employees that they come to work and they don't want to work because they're not getting paid. But then it's like they don't want to stay home. And then you have people that, um, like, for example, my account has been overdraft because I have bills coming out my account and my direct deposit not going in. And another main concern here, we're not on a Monday through Friday, um, schedule here, is rotate, is a rotating.
You can continue. You still have a few seconds.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. You got another fifteen seconds.
Okay, this is, we're not on a, we don't want a rotation, rotated schedule. So how does that work? Like if it's just Monday through Friday on a calendar and, um, Workday? How can we, how can that change for the, um, for us to put our rotating schedule into the calendar? Because everybody's schedule is not the same weekly. It's like Monday, Sunday, Tuesday, Sunday, Wednesday, Sunday.
Thank you, Adrian. Uh, so we're, we're going to move on. Um, I want to thank those that have testified thus far. If you would like to testify, uh, please use the raise hand function, uh, so we can identify you. For now, we're going to move on to folks on the line. Um, so you're going to hear two beeps. Um, once you hear those two beeps, if you'd like to testify, please let us know. Um, please state your name. If you don't want to testify, please say so as well. Caller one? Caller two?
Not here to testify.
Thank you. Caller three? Caller four? Caller five? Caller six? We, we can hear you? Caller seven, that's the last caller. All right, next we've got, uh, Robin Scott Lyles. Robin, we can't hear you if you're talking. Okay, that concludes public testimony.
Mr. Chair, do we know if every, I know of a couple of people that I know were going to testify. So I just want to make sure that they knew where the raise hand function was.
Sure. Um, to, to explain, the raise hand function is the, is at the bottom left. It looks like a hand. If you click that, we'll be able to, you'll pop to the top and we should be able to see you.
You have to look under participants. So at the bottom of your screen, click participants.
Uh, I see a Taylor Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, good evening. I actually submitted my testimony via email, but, um, when you said public testimony was over, um, I just wanted to get my statement in. Um, so my name is Taylor Hall and I would like to express my concerns and experiences with this transition to Workday. The switch to Workday has been a complete nightmare for me. I've been a forensic scientist too with the Baltimore Police Department since August twenty twenty. When the program went live in October twenty twenty, none of my employment information was correct. I was not only listed, I was not only listed under the wrong title, but receiving the wrong pay as well. I followed all protocols given to me to correct this issue prior to the first payroll check from Workday. But nearly four pay cycles later, I still haven't received the proper pay. I think the city did not do its due diligence or consider its employees when they decided to implement Workday. The entire launch lacked adequate training, effective communication, and the proper infrastructure in terms of who can perform essential functions and who to reach out to regarding, to, regarding the correct, the correction of any issues. Not to mention, we receive multiple Workday emails a day with different directions every time. I've completed countless Workday pay adjustment forms, sent multiple emails, and have not received any resolution. The only information I am given is that it's being worked on in conjunction with DHR. I'm very disappointed in the new system and feel that it's unfair that we as employees are expected to come to work every day, not knowing when we will be properly compensated. In the midst of a pandemic, the switch to Workday has added additional stress to my life because not receiving the proper pay affects my ability to pay my bills and support my family. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you, Taylor. I'll give one more, uh, opportunity for folks who, uh, had trouble finding the raise hand function. If you click under participants and click the hand, that should allow you to pop to the top so that we can find you. Seeing no further hands raised, uh, that will conclude public testimony. Thank you. We're gonna, uh, we're, we're not going to vote on this resolution tonight. Um, so I want, I want to thank you guys, um, for, for bearing with us and I want to thank the agencies for, um, talking us through these issues and, and thank you especially as the sponsor and, and, um, Council President for, um, for bringing this issue to, to the top. Um, this meeting is in recess, in recess. Thank you.